It's Wednesday, December 7th at 7:04 PM. This is the Village Council's special workshop meeting. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Lori Borchel. Kelsey Cook.
Here.
Lauren Helmut.
Yep.
Allison Kemp.
Yes.
Ashley Ross.
Here.
Number four is approval of the agenda. I believe we want to, since we have guests today, move item 6D up to the top of the list of new business. So with that modification, we'll take them in. Do we have to go into the order that...
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Perfect.
Seconded by Helmut, seconded by Ross.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any nay? Next, we have call to the public. So this is item number five. And this is a time for anyone who would like to address council for anything on the agenda or not on the agenda. Please feel free to speak. We can... The first item of new business is going to be the Scripter Park improvements and student memorial, which I think is what our guests are here for. So if you would like to speak at this time, feel free to do so, or you can kind of speak as council is debating as well. We'll allow that, just to get input. We're really interested in everything you have to say. So is there anything you want to start with and comment? Or would you rather council kind of start addressing that first issue?
Yeah, so you guys, we're moving out to the...
Hey, you're it!
I have a question about it. So because it's a workshop, we can be more interactive and interact with them.
Yeah, I think we can... Yeah, it's council's meeting, but since we're here for the agenda item, I think we can be pretty interactive.
Do you want me to look that way?
If you guys want to do like an actual statement, whether it's just the statement part right now where we listen, go ahead and take your time for that now. But otherwise, if we just won't even move over to that, we'll do more about back and forth.
Yeah, we can just do that.
All right. Any other public comment at this time? If not, we'll move on to new business. So new business, first up is the Scripter Park improvements and student memorial. So let's talk about the student memorial first. So this is a topic that council brought up quite a while ago and we had to have a presentation on. And since we have, I think you've been out and I know Mr. Mador has been out to Scripter Park to kind of look at a potential location. And so I'm really interested in what your thoughts are, kind of what the status is. So we've looked into what the space could manage and also some potential tree options. But I know that we're excited to get here tonight. So anyone who'd like to speak, feel free to. So if you don't mind just introducing yourself first to everyone.
I'm Brian Cooper, kind of helping out with the students here to get things rolling slowly. Oh, are we someone to introduce or just go for the talk?
Yeah, if you don't mind if you stand around.
Oh, my name is Melon. I graduated last year.
Oh, my name's Brittany Allen and I'm a junior.
I'm Sheri Mear.
I'm Jen Alley.
Thank you.
And then is it easier from right here? It's good.
You're on your last... Lori, can you serve us? If you don't want to be on TV, go over here and face the camera.
So first off, I really, I would like to apologize for our intermittent communication. I think that's the best way to say it. I think I'm always a very transparent person and we have been working and coming together over the summer. But I also feel as students and as parents, I think there were challenges along the way for me. I had four children and two in high school. And I think that once we got out of high school, it was kind of like a decompressed time and it was kind of hard to get situated emotionally to be able to kind of come together and get some talks down. And then summer came and we kind of met and we started having some ideas and we got the spot that was presented. And I think we came back and a second one was offered with a little bit more space, I believe. And then we met, we met out at Scripter and we had some conversation about how we could use that space and just kind of started getting some ideas together. Then we kind of fizzled a little bit in sense of, I think we were anticipating returning to school. And I think for all of us, that was a little bit overwhelming. And then once we got into school, then we started getting into anticipation of the anniversary. So I think that has made it a little bit more challenging for us, even though it has been on our radar and agenda. And I do have... My wife was kind enough to draw up an idea. And I'm trying to remember and I want you guys to remember too that you said to go big. So in a sense of what we were hoping to achieve in that space. So I do have that with me. And again, I haven't had the chance to go back to the group formally and decide through text saying, you know, is it going to work? Is it not? There are some things that we would want to change, but at least conceptually, probably get an idea of what we were hoping for. So I'll give you the sheets for that. And that's kind of where we're at right now. So again, I'm deeply apologetic. We're trying to, we're trying to kind of wrangle and stay on point. And I think the one thing that I've learned is that sometimes when one person is kind of wandering, another person can kind of step up. But I think there were times where we were all kind of quiet and it just made it a little bit more challenging. And I think there was also some miscommunication from some of the things the school was saying in regard to what a permanent kind of memorial would look like. So I think that kind of threw us off a little bit at times. And I think sometimes we start to get different thoughts about what that's going to be. And then you're like, well, the community's supposed to do this. So I think we were kind of stuck for a minute, but I think we're on point now.
That sounds great.
I know. I know, I was wondering, wasn't quite sure if we were still going ahead with the space at Scripter at all, or if that was kind of being moved to a different location. So those weren't the guy to have to tell. And I know we all kind of were hoping for just an update to make sure that we're still looking at the space. Because if not, we were ready to do something just to put in trees right away, just to get a pub space. But we don't want to rush you guys. There's no rush. It's just that if you want to start with... It might be easier to start with building points and say, you know, this is where we can start. And then we can, we think we want to do this next, but we know that we'll put these in this space and this space that we can change our mind and do it a different way in the future. Don't feel like, I don't think we feel like anything has to be... We've even said parts of it can come years down the road and that too. It's just, we didn't want to, I think it was move some routes. I know I had to just like, there's something. So it's good to hear from you guys.
Yeah, I think part of that, I don't think we were intending to move anything. I think we're really happy and appreciative of the space that was offered. And I think we'd like to kind of keep that in a sense and keep... I think Hannah's garden is very well established in regard to planning. And I didn't want to disrupt their plans. And I also wanted to honor the families for the children that were lost. So I think that this would be a great community piece to achieve that. I don't think we were intending to change that line of the location. I just think we kind of just wanted to a little bit. So do you guys want to see the kind of, so the shape? Like the, ignore the overhead view. But I mean, conceptually, if you want to take a peek at it, this might give you an idea. Nothing is set in stone, but I did want you to see that we have put time and thought into it.
Yeah, that's a bit different than the drawing, the one thing.
Yeah.
But Shilling had a drawing, I think.
Yeah, so, yeah, he had, I think there was still four, like the concept...
Four corners.
Yeah, the concept of it are four allocations of the background. I don't know if you guys can see it on your piece of paper or not, but... So we're still...
I can make copies, actually, copies of paper, we need more.
Joe, what's the, your other space look like?
That was just something I'd, that was something I'd do then probably August.
That was the first place.
Kind of August, something like that. Just use it as an option to consider, just where...
Some copies.
Yes, okay, yep.
Was it more of the volleyball? Just kind of stuff over there?
Yeah, because we can move our two transit along the side while more than come in.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we do, we have, there's some underground electric and water and up well that is not a lot in the market where we can have any structures or boulders or tree or a problem.
Yeah.
Those are upstairs.
Oh, no, this actually helps me.
And again, just when you're looking at it, that, that was just, that was drawn based on conversation about concepts.
You don't have that, you have this.
The shape doesn't have, I mean, like, there's the concept of the four areas is what we're hoping for. I don't think the picture necessarily represents kind of the four versions too. It's kind of, I think it's sketchout, it's not the easiest program to kind of draw on.
So just a question.
Yeah.
We have this lovely drawing by Joe Mador. It's pretty much the same an architect would do. I'm sure it's legit. Is this in the same spot?
No, so I think...
They're here.
I'm sorry. Here, let me count them.
After that, they came and said, what if I remove...
Because I'm showing Lori's two architectural design.
I think what we had was more of a square.
Okay.
So that's kind of how it was expanded.
But we're losing the volleyball.
Yeah. They came and asked if we could lose volleyball unless, sure. We could, that would give them more space to make it more square.
Okay. Or, or it could be moved in potential...
Yeah, that's just saying.
That's fine. Is the volleyball area used?
It's pretty sad right now. Got a volleyball court anywhere, though.
That's true.
Well, the volleyball could also be, isn't it pretty sad shape?
It's the last time I went to a...
So if we're, we could move it.
It's movable, it's relocatable.
We have space for it.
Yeah, because when I said, I did that to try to wedge it into that the pie-shaped piece was there without it. And then they said, we can move the volleyball court. I said, sure, I got with Dan. Like, yeah, that's something we could reestablish somewhere else.
Sure.
I mean, it's, you know.
Okay.
Because...
It's very interesting, it's a unique design, I like it.
Can we give them an actual usable, like a dimension of the new space based on an underground infrastructure?
Can I stake it?
Yeah.
If you want to, I can... My wife is an architect and she's done, you know, she's had contacts with different, you know, community buildings and different structures like that. She'll know a lot more than I will. She always does. So I mean...
Keep that in mind for the rest of your life. You'll be fine.
I know, I know, we've been 26 years together, so I know. So, yeah, for sure. She would be much more capable of having those communications with somebody that would be in the know. I don't know. So I'm just here to support and again, like, kind of make sure that... The most important thing, in my opinion, is the voice of the students and the families. So that can turn into whatever they see it as. But again, I also want to come to you with something on paper to let you know that again, it's not, we're at the same place that we were five months ago.
Right.
So do we have a cost estimate on the drilling?
Huh?
I know where the water comes from.
Yeah, well, again, I don't think, I don't think we're at that point yet for our planning.
Okay, I didn't know if there were numbers here.
No, the only reason why...
Less than a million.
Yeah. The only reason why I don't think we allocated too much thought to that first is because that would be a lot of effort and time based on the fact that if we came here and said, Brian, you're... You guys are missing the park by a mile. So if that's the case, that would have taken a lot of time to kind of cover and all that. Now, if we're like, hey, we're interested and want to move forward with a concept or an idea of this, I think we could work toward doing that.
Can I ask what the materials are?
Yeah, so...
Without your wife being here and causing divorce and...
She's driving to Kentucky right now. I gave you a caller and... So the, the, so what you're looking at with the benches that face the... There's a little bit of a glass piece there. Those would be etched pieces of glass. And then I think she, if you read the, I think the description tells you a little bit about it, about what some of the materials are.
So would it be fair to say that we should apply for some grant opportunities to see what the dollar amount could be and then see what we can build that's like this with the amount of money that we could get? Ashley?
Yes. So I've been working with Steve St. Helena just on funding and trying to figure out the other garden as well. I will say fundraising for this is a little bit trickier just because it's just a topic that there's not like pots of money that people are necessarily always giving to. So it's not that it's not doable, it's just we are being very creative. That being said, this absolutely falls into like parks plans. So grants for that, you know, as we're going forward in the next few years, we have these plans that we're thinking about doing to Scripter Park. This could be incorporated into those.
I remember our librarian, Brian, was the one who kind of stood up after the student spoke and said, go big. Here's a foundation you should apply to for the grant money. Is that...
Is there another four parks in there?
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
So I've been meeting with Kathy, who's their executive director there as well. There's, there, yes, there's grants to apply for through there. They also have the new Oxford Fund that I don't know where it is financially right now, but it was established over the summer. And so there are pots of money to do it. It's just going to be very thoughtful and like thinking about what do we need and where? And if we can, I, in the few months that I've been working on the other one, I would say we would definitely have to phase it just financially. Like, we have our little pot of money for the trees. We know what we want to do for the park moving forward. And then there's also the opportunity to apply for additional funding. Unless there is some generous corporate donors, which there are.
Stop being from corporate donorship.
Which, I mean, there are, but you have to find that connection and find somebody who would be passionate enough to put in. Like, I don't know, but based on like the plants from the other garden to this, I mean, you're looking at, depending on running water and everything, six figures easily. And that's a lot. And that's fine, I just want us to prepare for that in the next few years.
I had two corporate directors reach out to me a year ago and they said, when we're ready, to let them know. And so I could reach back out to them and just say, hey, we're getting there, how much are you thinking?
I think if you, if you, based on what we have...
What will you give us?
Just based on this, and I don't know all of like the sculptural and the fountain, but like overall, I think you could easily go for an ask of $100,000 and get the majority of this done, if not all of it.
I think, and most of them need community foundation. So it's maybe Foundation, Oxford Fund. It's part of community foundation, it sounds like maybe. But they can do an exam and then they fund it back.
Okay.
I may, my suggestion would be, is if you have a corporate, so... For example, Meyer, because we're all familiar. Meyer has corporate donations that they're going to donate to 501(c)(3)'s. And you also have foundations and you have like family funds. You're going to want somebody who can legally donate to the municipality. We don't have a fund with 4CCF. If they donate to the Oxford Fund, it doesn't mean that we're ever going to see that money for this.
Would that be prearranged? It would earmark specifically for that.
We could use them as like a fiscal sponsor, which I know Kathy would be probably more than willing to do, but that's just, it's a lot. I know she's been really working really well with us. But I would say like, if we're ready, we have the money this year to at least start with the trees and you have contacts, I would say, hey, we're ready, here's a mock-up. And I would say at least $100,000. And that's just me not knowing anything about gardening, just being someone to see.
A year of etched glass and fountain and I think hundreds low.
Yes, I do, I think it's a good...
But if you think about like the etching and things like that, that could be like maybe when you talk to a company that does laser etching.
I'm not thinking it's out of the question, I'm thinking a hundred's low.
Well, okay, so that's where it gets a little tricky. If they're fundraising, they would have to have kind of their own group and somebody to be the responsible party. You don't really want to set up a fund with a community foundation, whether it be 4CCF or, you know, Southeast Michigan. The idea is mostly to have those funds in perpetuity. And so I guess you can do major like capital projects, but they wouldn't be apt to set up a fund. They would maybe, they would be a fiscal sponsor, I guess, more than anything else. So if it's how you want to do the fundraising, like we can figure out a way to make the money happen. It's just, it would be more conversations. And Kathy's willing to work with us. And some corporations can donate to municipalities. Like, we fall into a lot of grant areas, like how we're getting the T-Mobile and Consumers Energy. They're able to donate to us because we are a municipality. So we might not even have to go that route. But that, that means that Terry's going to be the responsible party for a lot of extra funds. And you wouldn't want us accepting just small donations. That's not, you wouldn't want to go that route.
The grants that are more, most likely usable for this... Sorry, I'm not...
You're so leaky.
Do, are the grants that we would, that would be, this project would be eligible for, do those require matching money?
I would not apply for anything for matching, unless it was a grant one that we were already doing for Scripter Park. Like, if you're doing a corporate one, I wouldn't do anything for matching. Most of them are, most corporations that I envision us going to are going to be like that T-Mobile, Consumers Energy ones that we've already got and that they just, they want to do the feel-good, but also it gives them benefit. And so they don't look for the match. It doesn't do anything for them.
Can I be the Grinch? It's that time of year. I, this is beautiful. But I think beach, etched glass, volleyball court, stitches.
I like the court be gone, right?
Move.
There's going to be other things. There's going to be kids. How, what kind of glass? I mean, are, are we talking shattered glass day three?
No, I wouldn't think so. So I'll tell you why. And I'll tell you why as a layperson, not as a, you know, anybody that's a designer. But it's close enough to the street to that I imagine it would have to be some kind of glass.
The rocks, yes.
So I would, yeah.
And just, because again, this is gorgeous. I'm a mom.
Yeah.
My kids have had a lot of stitches, a lot of stitches. I don't need them at the beach.
I imagine a lot of that will change.
I think material wise too, I think there might be some odds. That's something, and that's like part of like the conversation and things like that, like ideas, yeah, because I didn't think about that necessarily, but I'm sure there's, there is different grade glass that...
Because you're a dad, not a mom.
That's right, I'm a dad.
Dads don't worry about stitches, moms worry about stitches.
Well, I do, because I think about deductibles.
Aren't you a nurse?
I'm an occupational therapist.
There you go.
So I think, again, just being able to present and seeing like what we need for adjustment, really, this is just way, in a roundabout way, like really, we have to come back together, get family input, see what's going to work, what's not, see what's financially responsible. I'll tell you the one thing I am, is financially irresponsible.
Stay responsible or irresponsible?
Well, no, I say financially, I always say instead of cheap, I always say financially conservative, because you know, sometimes you're talking, you want to be conscious of money going out. So I'm very aware of that. So I think that's something to take into consideration.
I'm going to tell you what I really, I like the rusted panels.
Yeah.
I think it's very cool. And I'm just looking at safety. I'm just looking at kids at the beach and how dumb kids, little kids. Not you guys, you guys are adults. Little kids can be.
I think they can have conversations about materials as it goes on, but I think like the concept, we have the space. You know, I don't know if we're ready to purchase the tree suggest. I think that's feedback that I'd like to get, but...
That was me, I'm thinking if they're not going to use their space at all, we should put something in.
So with the trees too, the one thing that we were thinking also, because I know fall obviously is a time to plant trees and things like that. But I know what was discussed earlier on was the fact that the families might get, might get the opportunity to kind of pick out a tree that, that was desirable for them. So I mean, I don't know how soon that has to be necessarily. I mean, I know, I know there's a sense of urgency, but I also, in a way, I want to make sure it's right too, so...
Yeah, I think that's most important, is making sure it's right. Because that was going to be my question, is if we could do the trees now, would you even want to? Or would you want to see this other space built out? And then the trees are the final thing to put in. So we have the money for the trees, that's something that we budgeted from the village funds, but we don't need to spend that now. We can wait until you're ready for them to go in. If there's a certain point in the, you know, build-out that you want to see those planted, because that seems like very ceremonious in some way. But yeah.
So prior to the students and you were, reached out to us, council had already put in the last year's budget in the spring, put in four trees, we were going to plant them, invite just the family members and, and keep it kind of low-key. And then the students came to us and then this took on a different approach, like, great. And just recently, I heard through a great friend that, well, we think that they've made it going to be a Scripter Park, or I'm sorry, Seymour Lake Park. And so we thought, well, okay, that's why I just in the last week, Monday, I looked at some of the trees for us. It's a window opportunity for us. If this wasn't happening, we're going to go plant four trees as we originally planned. Well, that's pretty much off the table now, now because I see we're re-engaging and going back to this plan, which is great, I think fully supportive. But if you see us talking about these particular four trees, that's why. It's because...
I accept responsibility.
I had no idea you were going to be here.
We blame you, Cooper.
Monday, I had no idea you were going to be here and this plan was still going to go forward. And so I think for us, establishing your, you still want to do the square thing? We established where the footprint is.
Mr. Shilling bumped it up 25 feet or so on his side, but no kidding.
We could establish where that footprint is. We could establish where that footprint is in the spring perhaps and relocate our little two-track that goes out there to our wild house. And we can maybe even relocate the fall, or the volleyball court sometime over the next spring or summer too. Get that established, get the footprint established. So now we know where it is, what it looks like. If there's, like when Dan and Brent and I were talking out there with Mr. Shilling and I know you were there, right? Couple of these trees can just go away because they're, they're not great trees anyways. They're in the way, we want this nice square area. That tree and this other couple of trees just goes away. We can kind of get that laid out this spring and then...
I think that gives us time to think about financials as well and then start fundraising and understanding where our money's going to come from too. So I think that, I think knowing that we're moving forward, I think will be kind of, kind of great. And then I think hopefully the rest can kind of fall into place.
We'll figure out a dimension and then get the footprint established out here. Move whatever tree, volleyball, and then this two-track down a little farther before it juts over to get to the wild houses. We can get that, you know, done, you know, in spring, summer. And that, that, now we know we've got the area established.
So, sorry, go ahead. So you have no need to apologize. So you have no need to apologize, the very least that you need to, like, deal with being burdened by deadlines. Um, my concern now is, is there a way where there's either, I, I know no one wants to speak for everyone, um, but either, there is a point person to, you know, spread that info, you know, to keep in contact with the group or, you know, a thread, email thread to keep in contact.
So.
Make sure no one's like falling through the cracks.
Yes, so back to your whole thing where it was, it was, so that's the hard part is I, I feel like, you know, one person might think something and then all of a sudden it's said and then somebody thinks it's a thing. I think, I, I see that quite frequently. Um, so I, I was kind of hoping that part of the next step would be to have like a little sit-down once we kind of establish a little bit more with you guys and then I, I would be happy to stand next to them, but I, I don't, I hesitate to get, to be too pushy because I don't want to dad them. Because I really do want this to be from the students. So, um, Olivia I think had said that she might be the point person for the students, right? And I know there was, um, an email as well with you, but, um, yeah, I think we, I think we may be better moving forward with that, but I think Olivia, no one would be like, it's not right.
And I knew when I reached out to you guys and shared your information, what you grabbed earlier was happening. School, summer was winding down, the thought of school was ramping up, and all those things took front stage, front and center stage, I'm sure. So there was any, well, they're ignoring us from our end, which, but I didn't want to, I didn't want a junior to reach out and cry either, so I just let it set for you guys too.
That being said, if, if we don't, I mean, look, I'm always, might, you know, I'm always available for an email or a phone call too, so I mean, I'm.
There was a difference to email that popped up here later in the summer, um, I can't remember, it was Gmail or something.
That was probably me.
Yes.
I have a question. Um, with this concept, knowing about, uh, concept at Seymour Lake Park, I mean, how are you feeling? Is it okay that there's two? Do you want two? Is it, they have served different purposes?
You're referring to Hannah's garden?
Yeah. Okay, I just, I wanted to ask just by ample understanding, so, okay, thank you.
I'm not sure what the answer to that question was.
So I think, I think that's a, it's a tough question to answer, because I, I, we, it's hard to have that conversation in a roundabout way. I think Hannah's Garden is, um, definitely, it was already, it's, it's her thing, it's for, it's for Hannah.
And it's fine.
Yeah, and, but so I think that, that's where, I didn't want the students to lose opportunity for the space that you guys were offering because I think it's a great gift from the community. I don't know if even gift is the right thing. It's, it's, it's the, it's the right thing to do as a community to recognize our students.
It, it's one in a different way, and I just wanted to make sure that that's how everyone is feeling.
But it's a joint space for anyone, so.
How much you guys know I love Scripter Park? I love the fact that every kid in high school heads up to Scripter Park, senior skip day, a million reasons to go to Scripter Park. Cool off after a drag meet, whatever. So I have no problem with this.
Very good.
Okay, I think you just, what do you guys, really, you just know that you don't have to have everything a hundred percent, right? We can, you know, like I said, do it in steps. This is step one and we're ready for step one. We know that this will integrate no matter how we, you know, it'll work as we change, if we change. The idea of the centerpiece completely changes, but we can start with the outer pieces, you know?
Shapes might change a little bit, um, centerpiece, whatever, whatever we can get from family input. But space-wise, yes, that's gonna be that, yeah.
Footprint, and then the squared and the shapely one, I think that's.
Yep.
That's our, our first goal.
Do they not have senior skip day anymore? You guys look at me when I say senior skip day like.
I don't think so.
I don't know what that is.
I told you the date after you come back from spring break, like you're off a week and then senior skip day.
We had senior skip day last week, yeah.
It was senior skip day the Monday after spring break.
I say that, you guys like.
They know you call it something different now. Yeah, mine, mine had about fifteen.
I feel like seniors.
You're all important.
Seniors gift day is like every Friday and April thing.
I would like to possibly sit down or have a conversation about fundraising, you know, make sure that you're there if you have contacts. Because I do think you're at a point where we could, you know, you have a concept, we have the space, that now Q1 for fundraising corporations is the best time to go and ask for the funds. I don't want to put any time pressure on you, whether it happens this year or next year or wherever, that's fine, but I think even if we, you know, sit on it for a while, I, I, I think that's okay, right? As long as it stays earmarked for this project.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm so. What was that?
After you have that meeting, I do know people, just let me know what you decide.
No, not you.
I know. I know people, they're. Here's what it is, but.
I guess it just depends on what we want to do, because there's different routes to go about it for fundraising, whether we want to do it, you know, all of municipality. I think the hardest part, like with the other model, is that they're soliciting smaller donations and have been, that there needed to be a space for it to go and like, we don't want to deal with that, but also, I also, we don't want to deal with that is not what, we can't deal with that is about.
Well, with that, she sounds smart enough to know what she's talking about, I'm willing to trust her, to take her in the right direction, take us in the right direction. And that's a, it's a learning curve for everybody. I'm gonna let you pick. A1C, 503C, K, all, whatever you got.
Is it A1C stone or something?
No, it's, it's when you're diabetic, your A1C number, um, you pick the route to go and we'll go with it.
Yeah, I trust your direction on all of this and I think with.
I think if we have, I mean, we'll need to have more conversations, but I think if you can start having a base of funding moving forward and that's gonna start, you know, if we start in the new year marking it out and moving stuff, then we can start, I don't know the terms, but like Terry will have her pot of money that things can then be going directly towards this as we go forward.
So, breaking Brian into groups, so the original, this is one aspect rather because of the, the terrain we were dealing with. So if you're looking at the square and this expands over here, we're, we're, we're gonna be, looks like probably in a hundred foot, a hundred foot range. Is that?
That's, I think that's kind of what Mr. Schilling marked out, right?
Okay, I thought that one day, he had no dimensions on his map, that one day the big one he rolled out, and it was like two hundred by two hundred, like.
Whatever he did, whatever.
We all knew it's now plus twenty-five.
Yeah, there you go. So, so I, I should probably at least get our arrows and kind of lay this out in our, in my mind, say. I talked to our DPW guys, there's some sewer and water lines along the parking lot, that's why we wound up sending the sidewalk over the way to forty-eight foot park area, not right adjacent to the parking, because there's sewer and water lines out there. And then these are wellhouses that feed all the water over to the water plant, so there's some areas we just have to stick away from, but I think we can get a nice fund by a hundred area in there, maybe a hundred and fifteen. We'll lay it out and, and try to get that to stay, we can put some stakes in out there, we can mark with some stakes, we'll, I was talking to our DPW superiors today. Get some mistakes out there, mark your stakes, then you guys can come out and look at it.
Okay, that'd be awesome.
And I think that would be great. And I think we could probably do that relatively quick.
Yeah, so.
At least give us something to look at and visualize.
And then, like, if we're talking about sitting down for fundraising concepts and grants and different things like that, um, this, the sooner that we can initiate those things, um, we're definitely, I think, ready to talk about those things. And then, like I said, this, if, if it can evolve in a sense of, you know, input, because it was just based on, again, conversation and then, because it's best to really kind of have everybody together, because what one person thinks might work might not be great for another and then like, you, you have to kind of, my wife described it, like you have to take everybody's vision by hand and kind of meld it into something that's gonna work for them. I'm like, I can't, I have a drastic figure, so.
It's a lot of responsibility.
Yeah, it is, yeah, so.
Do you have any questions for us down here at this time?
The only thing I have is gratitude and I appreciate your patience and I, I really do and your, um, desire to want to be a part of it and support this, so I really appreciate it.
No, thank you. We will look forward to it and are very happy to have you all, you know, it's, it should be you, you know, that are doing this and so it's not us. We just wanted to make the state base available and do something if nothing was gonna be done in the village, but very grateful and happy that you are stepping up. So it sounds like, um, Mr. Mador will work with our DPW to figure out the exact space, approximately a hundred by a hundred feet, could be larger. We'll stake it, mark it, see where there's any utilities, that way you can look at and you can walk the exact space. And then, uh, maybe in the new year, we'll investigate potential funding opportunities and we'll just stay in contact, uh, with you. And then if anything changes or comes up, feel free to communicate with Joe. And then as we take steps, we'll communicate back with you and then we'll try to just keep together and however long it takes is totally fine. So the space will not go away, it will be there for you, so.
So have we heard your questions, like in, for like the funding and the, like the, you know, the, the different things that we would have to situate, like I, I probably would need some guidance with that, you know, from all of us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work together. That's Ashley.
She is financial, I'll just, I'll ask people, well, Ashley.
We just need you guys to go and find five hundred thousand dollars. Just go.
Start giving here.
Until you have the money.
Again, we can move this two-track over and go around, we have some, that's not a problem, give us the smack, so this is not, it's still to be.
Don't we have any rich kids working on this? What's going on?
There is a grant with the Southeast, um, Michigan Community Foundation, saying that wrong, about, that's specifically for parks, it's through a Ralph C. Wilson Fund. And it's about. Uh, well, it's also about accessibility. They're due December fifteenth, they go on, they'll, they'll have another cycle in a few months anyway. So I think if there's things, sorry?
No, I just want to say for our audience, so Ashley Ross is a council person, but obviously, as you can tell, specializes in grant writing and finding funding. And so we're very fortunate to have her on council, just because she offers that ex, that extra expertise, so.
That we've yet to see take advantage of, but we're hoping.
What did she want to be, mom?
That's for the DDA, that is.
I'm appointed by the village.
Sounds like things are about to get uncomfortable.
I'd like to stir the pot.
So Ashley serves on the DDA, um, for council as well, and she's gotten a DDA hundreds of thousands of dollars to improve the downtown area, which I'm sure you've seen already. So that was, Ashley was behind all of that, so we have a great person in our corner to work with.
Ashley, Ashley.
That's all good.
So I think we have all the right people in the room, so at least to start, so I think that is good. Anything further from council on this item? No, okay.
Tell your wife we said nice job.
Yeah, this looks beautiful. Thank you. Chair, thanks.
Bye. We also want to talk about all of our fun things on this event.
So, Scripter Park improvements, is that, is there any? Is there any other improvements that we want to talk about besides the memorial to Scripter Park at this time? That was, it's worded as Scripter Park improvements and student memorial, so is there anything?
What are we doing about the? The wall?
The grant, uh, for open county parks is just coming out, they might have come out this week, and it's to middle of January, I believe. I've gathered at least three or four different letters of support, uh, from various people.
We've been putting that out for so long, I really feel like it's gotta be done.
Yeah, well, the grant just opened up, like this, this week or maybe Friday. So it's got January fourteenth, I think is the deadline, we have our plan, we have our letters of support, we have our ADA Disability Network, um, review on it, so they support it. So I think we're looking okay there.
So that's just the wall?
The retaining wall.
And the pavilion.
And the pavilion?
Yes, that was what we just got, that day. It was just too much to go and try and ask for the bathrooms, because I think it was a hundred, a hundred fifty max.
You know, those bathrooms were built with the federal grant.
And the water conservation grant maybe, or?
I don't remember. It was actually before I worked at the village, not much, but before.
The village existed before?
That was what I was. The Stone Age.
So, but yeah, so the pavilion and the retaining wall are what's gonna be incorporated.
What is the timeline on those? I'm sorry.
I think the January, middle of January fourteenth, fifteenth is the deadline, I think, for the grant.
To apply for the grant, okay. And then the award, no, yeah, I think we're gonna ask the same thing, like when would the award be or when would the work be done?
I don't know if they have a timeframe for the awards, if it can be. The retaining wall more likely could be done next year, I think, because it might be in the middle of summer before they get awarded.
Okay.
Maybe a little longer. I know, um, the township got that hundred thousand for their pavilion for the, uh, farmers market, and we're just now in the process of doing that, but that thing's huge.
I feel like Broly has already done the engineering for that wall.
It's a pretty fab wall and they have it laid out, yes. There, there, there will be some specs that need to be done for the bidders.
If we don't win this grant, or I guess, when, when's the way of, when is the wall just put, or do we have, or is it in danger of being?
It's not in danger, it, it's just getting old, as the wood deteriorates every year, every year, it just gets worse. Um, it's not like it's leaning, it's not a danger or anything, it's not like washed out underneath it, but it's time to get it done. And then the big, large concrete pieces that'll go along there will also be upper seating, so it'll be good to move and stabilize it a lot. So that's just the scope of that, and kind of that grant. And I think people like Akritanjibu already were successful last year, they can't apply every year, it's every other year, so, that will jump out last year, so hopefully.
So there's a, there's a potential for the retaining wall to be done in twenty twenty-three and then the pavilion maybe the year.
Yeah, it depends on that, you know, I don't know materials-wise, how that's gonna run if your whole place is not as bad.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on Scripter Park before we move on? Um, so we are coming up on halfway through our meeting, I'm saying halfway assuming we're ending at nine. I would like to keep it, just to kind of time management and that we don't get burnt out, but, um, the next item, if you're looking at the list going down, would be residential rental and inspections. Do we want to talk about that one next?
Would you? I was just, do you want to get through some short ones?
Right.
And then do this one in a different meeting?
Well, and my other idea was, I would really like to hear incoming chief majestics.
And you had a conflict.
Yeah, and I, so.
Anyone postpone on that one?
I think it would be wise to postpone too, you know, if you would hear.
Let's be, all those done in fifteen minutes, we're still ahead for it.
Yeah, right.
That should be the most productive.
All right, so let's, let's postpone residential rentals and inspections to, to the next meeting, which I think we need to pick a date that we can all attend, I'm not sure that.
I can, I can now, yeah. Sounds bad, because the library had an issue, I supposed to be going. My schedule's freed up a bit.
You had a fire flavor. I don't know what extent it was.
Yeah.
Caused some damage.
A lot of smoke damage. I think it was the, whatever.
My husband is drunk.
I don't know.
Thank God it wasn't the.
I think they were putting new ones in.
Yeah, my son watched the crane up with all the new ones the other day, at daycare, it was really exciting.
Yeah, they all pulled in there before the buses and I was.
Oh my God, there's a crane!
It was the best day of the year.
About the door, I'm getting built.
My son screams that out loud all the time, so yeah. Okay, so the residential rentals and inspections will postpone to the next, do you need a motion on that or just we can keep moving?
No, I'll just, I can move to the bottom of the list and then we'll add it to.
Okay, so rear storage building, do we want to talk about that one next?
Yeah, I think Mo, you threw that out there to be on, I, I don't know. There's a building in the parking lot both we talked about, and I have the plans over here for twenty nineteen in the parking lot. Three of those plans include the building being removed, because that was the flavor of the day, right? One plan shows the building still being there.
I think we just have to decide if we want that building, we have to put some money in it. If we want to live in it, I suppose we have to put some money in the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's over, we've killed it, we've gotta do it, we've gotta set the money aside.
The barn is mostly ugly, it has a few, it's not structural, because all the field is rusted and a lot of asphalt, uh, we could cut, but the new metal on the bottom, like bottom of the building there. That was, we actually know you just pissed four foot.
That's for total personal.
That's fine.
And there's gonna be forty, fifty grand amount of demo available for the cement slab.
What about the rugs?
No battle ground.
The rug, I, I think we have a couple, but I don't, I don't think we're. We have, do you have any estimates or stuff like that?
And what are we gonna do? What are we gonna use? Are we gonna keep letting, Joe Bob wants to do crafts there? Yeah, come on and start your craft.
Did he talk to you?
Joe Bob, you're world friends.
So you got the police that uses a third of it, you got Polian Trail uses twenty percent of it, you got the DDA, keep some junk out there, you got the chamber to keep some junk out there. And then you have the office area. Part of that office area is, uh, there's a meeting room, then the office, the office area Linda uses for her filing and stuff, because the other back room is just.
Who's Linda?
Then the Maran Polian Trail.
Okay.
What about sports, kids' sports?
Yeah, opening and opening.
Yeah, well, again, that's the, in the store, the meeting room area, which is about half the size of this room.
I think I need to see the building, I've actually never been over there.
Oh, it's a peach.
We could take a quick tour if you'd like.
Yeah.
But I think.
At some point soon.
It's very expensive to eat.
It is very expensive to eat. Because it's not here type, for the most part.
And that's where.
I'm kidding, people live here, not with a fire hall, it's like my favorite place, but I think we deserve to say, I'm kidding. We still have a lot of fun at that fire hall though. I think we have to decide, if we're gonna keep this fire hall, so it's gonna get us guys, make sure you shut that damn door.
They got nothing, don't even get us involved.
I'm not saying it's.
Six entities using that, leaving lights on, doors open.
Well, and we gotta get any of that? And that was next, oh, squirrels crawling through the rugs, you didn't mention that, you said there were some leaks.
Well, they got it in the vehicle, but that was, the doors were open all summer. Maintain? It's pretty much.
Operational, like what are the utility bills?
Um, in the summer, in the winter time, it gets pretty pricey. It's up to two grand a month on the heating bill in the worst part of winter.
What would we be looking at for cost to be storing police vehicles and everything outside or in a carport?
Well, again, we looked at the one building, the, the, the build, the estimate just to remove the metal structure was fifteen grand, and that was twenty nineteen. Then you have like a six-inch reinforced.
That's a whole different.
Yeah, pretty well qualified. Then you have like a six-inch reinforced, for six-inch reinforced cement slab that if you're doing the parking lot, would have to be gone if you want to make everything. So that's probably more than removing the building, because it's, you know, you're, you won't be able to sleep over there, be jackhammered so much with these big equipment. So I would think you would have as much to remove it as you would replace and upgrade it, uh, just off the top, or to, to make it nice.
I have no problem saving the building, but we have to, we have to do it.
That would save on heating, that would save on.
We can't just stop talking, you know, yeah, it's just an old building, let's do something else in the budget. We have to put some money into it if we're gonna keep it.
I agree.
The whole space is mess. I, I see a real value, aside of my personal bias, which I fully admit, because I love having the building there for privacy sake. But, I mean, we're talking about keeping cars outside, it, it just, it's u, it's used so much. If it was a space that was rotting and not being used, I think this conversation would be completely different.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
But we utilize it nonstop.
It is a great community asset, that I think we'd be losing big on if we tore it down.
We need, uh, what I would like to see, as I, I would like to see a, a more concrete, you know, make sure we're not missing costs, how much, you know, the utilities are to keep it operational and a list, um, what needs to be repaired and kind of make a priority list of, I think, the most critical. And go from there and have a, a rough idea of how much it costs.
Yeah, we get just let it sit there and rot.
Well, I think that's part of it too, is not just what's critical, I feel strongly that we use the building, our officers are using the building, they deserve a space that's more than just bare-bones functional, like I know I've heard things about the toy. bare bones functional. Like, I know, I've heard things about the toilet and things like, like, yes, it costs money to heat, but like, yes, it costs money to heat, and these are the people that are out there twenty-four seven doing this job, so like, I don't wanna just like seal a hole and keep a squirrel out. I want it to be a decent space for them, if, if possible.
Yes, and I definitely am in favor of keeping it. I just want, it's been a very nebulous wall, it just kind of exists type thing.
Joe, I think I gave you, uh, the guy that did the painting on the inside of our building, just roll with it, uh, said that he could repaint that whole entire building and replace panels that are rusted and have holes in it, I think for around ten or eleven thousand dollars. That was just one. Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty recent, so that's a relatively recent price too.
Yeah, could we get, I mean, could we get, I'd like to see the whole, like, cost estimate, like total restoration, like, let's give us, you know, we don't need huge stand, I mean, we need just standard stuff.
Should we look at the heating as well to see if putting?
You could not switch over to infrared heat versus, of course, their furnaces that hang on the ceiling, which are old. There's two of us, we've been in there. They have a Walmart furnace for the meeting room.
Yeah.
So.
Who could do that for us? Like, is there one, is there like an, like, could our engineer do that? Or would we need to go out and get quotes from all the different various?
I think it'd be probably better to start the quotes for the trades directly easier than, than, you know, Don and I and, and Chief's guy, they're, we can look at, say, alright. If you, part of the heating cost is because it's got leaks, right? So those leaks be repaired as part of the new panels and, and the caulking of the new panels, like that.
So, I have been in there before, but I, I frankly don't have a clear memory of what it looks like. To Chief's point, there are a ton of people coming and going out, in that space now. Is there, so how many people like have keys and just can like waltz in and out of that building?
Linda, Polian Trail. Again, so.
I don't think anyone's nefarious, but I mean.
Right, the only outside groups, the only outside groups would be the Oxford Public Library, friends of the library, ladies. That was meant to be a temporary storage for their books for a year or so. They didn't get the mileage pass. There's, but even them went out, they moved their books out around to, to make room for the Oxford Open Handed, five one seat group. And the ladies, last time I was out there, a couple weeks ago with them, they're, they're gonna look for a whole different areas with their books. You know, it's kinda, it's not dampierly in there, but it's, you know, it's not the best spot to store books.
But there's that whole upstairs that is almost useless, isn't it?
Pretty much, yeah.
Let's get it cleaned out.
It is pretty cleaned out now.
Whatever heated, do we gotta do with it? There's a lot of space up there.
Our, our guys have voiced their concerns about having so many people in and out of that garage and their safety and our equipment and stuff like that, so.
We could drop the partition relatively, you know, inexpensive, because it's indoor stuff, that would isolate your vehicles, your guys' personal vehicles.
So the old bathroom would only be accessible to them?
Well, you gotta be careful of that, because open handed, the other people might have to use it, right? Or, I mean, do we have to offer that?
So if we're gonna give out keys, why bother having a partition?
They're, they might not build, the, the, the partition would isolate their vehicles, police vehicles and any personal vehicles. Then there'd be maybe shared space, but there's the one bathroom that they've shared with the other tenants.
So you, the bathroom would be on the other side of the petition from the vehicles?
Kind of like in a hallway, between the partition and existing building space.
Is there a way, again, I can't exactly picture how it's divided, ask this right now.
Guys go look at it right now.
I kinda want to, but is there a way to put some sort of digital access code on the door?
Just like we have ours out here.
See who's coming and going.
They're, they're, I understand Chief's point, but there's not a ton of people. They're the DDA, the Chamber and the Polian Trail. They're our, our, our community partners, right? Two of them have offices in this room, or in this building. The only outside entity is a library, friends of the library, and then now this Oxford Open Hand. And their Oxford Open Hand has the key to their office area. That's it. That's the only door that has a key on it right now. Just in the last week, there's a further pedestrian door at the end that nobody really ever uses for out of, because there wasn't a key to it. Don's gonna reheat that, so myself, Mike, and the people, we don't have to cut through that room, that used to be the AA room, the Oxford Open Hand room, to get into the garage. We don't wanna be cut through there. They could be sitting and meet with a, a single mom and their kids and going over their finances and talking about what they're doing, and we're gonna have people trick you through that room.
And listen, I, I've talked to the officers, we're police officers, we're prepared for anything that goes outside the scope of safety, so we're, we're very cautious. So we're not really that concerned about it, so it's just, they're just.
Polian Trail has their gator and mowers and a whole rack, you know, twenty by fifteen, that's just full of weed whackers and chainsaws and stuff that she locked. It's like a, like a, a tool shed, it is not even a roof.
Are they in that back room, or?
The very, very back. Yeah, it's like a partitioned area, so again, we, we can tour it sometime and do.
I kinda, I gotta go look if you guys want, because I can't really picture what I'm necessarily talking about.
But the big picture, the roof, may have to have some, uh, panels replaced or something. It's not like they just pour some rain up there, but there are a few.
Oh, but where are the squirrels getting them?
Well, again, there are some, you know, squirrels, I don't know if they're as good as mice, but doesn't take much, right? But would that happen, the doors, the doors, the garage doors are wide open all summer long.
Right. Let us get into the garage doors.
What?
Cause somebody left the door open.
But there is a place upstairs of the roof.
Yes, and there could be a spot up there. It doesn't take much.
So just, just getting in the roof, you know.
Can we take a recess and go look at the fire hall? I'll make a motion to go into recess for, eh, fifteen. At eight o'clock.
I can just hit the opener.
So, meeting is resuming at eight twenty?
Nailed it.
So what do you think of the back, now that you've been there?
I would like to see a, I would like us to reach out to the trades and see what we can get for cost estimates, just so we can bring that back and all consider, like, what order we can do things in. I'm almost thinking the parking lot is a bigger priority. Because it is awful.
But it has to be planned together.
Yeah.
Cause the parking lot's gonna affect the building, the building's gonna affect the parking lot.
Okay.
And the parking lot's a disaster, and it's gotta be done. And that's like half a million dollars.
So how do we pay for that?
That's what it was when they gave us the quote last time, right? Two years ago?
So it's three quarter of a million dollars now?
Perhaps. Remember working, something like doing it in like four or five phases, and he says, it's not the best way to do it, he said, absolutely, he'd just done one of them, you know, I think, for the really good DPW same thing.
Outside of police access.
I feel like phasing it is just prolonging and making it a bigger nightmare. I mean, it needs to be done. How quickly could it get done? Oh, I don't even care about the noise.
If you had the money and you put it off a bid, and it could be done in one summer, yes.
So where's the money coming from for this?
Right.
How do we?
Is it potentially that you could borrow it from the sewer fund and pay it back over a few years? Potentially, you gotta pay with interest. Sewer fund has, what, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand in it, maybe?
I think it's more than that, but.
Yeah, because we know we paid that one bond a couple years ago cash, that saved us money in the long run.
Can you do that?
Yes. You have to do it officially, and you have to en- ensure that it's paid back, and you have to pay interest.
Okay.
How much interest took us?
Market rate type thing. You can't say, oh, one percent.
I think we have in the past, it's been a problem.
I would like to see the numbers for it personally, because I, I don't think there's delaying that parking lot any longer. The building sounds like if we can get, you know, the quotes in, some of them are going to be minor expenses, that will make a big difference.
What about somebody getting hurt in the parking lot? Wrecked ankle? You know, you keep the striping's gone.
We put it down two years ago.
No, it's hard to argue with people in the parking lot anymore.
But it, it, believe me, they found me on DPW, I said, just, just put it down, and it, it, it helped tremendously, the striping did. But that's been two or three years.
Right.
How about we get you the numbers for the, try to get some updated numbers on the parking lot? And then at the same time, work on some repair upgrades.
With the drainage, cause the drainage is gonna be a big part of that parking.
It is, that now is always considered, yes. Underground, adding the underground story. We even talked about how the, the drain coming out towards Hudson. It's not shallow enough, sometimes it would freeze from one catch basin to the other. Doug Scott has had some ideas how to insulate over the top, we can get a little bit deeper as well.
Is that still DDA property?
It's not at all, no.
It's our property.
It is, the DDA stuff at Hudson Street does not decide. I know, we've all liked it. Pick that cherry out of the tree and put it in a lot.
Well, I think the fact that the police department uses the fire hall.
Well, the D, the D, the DDA provides us fifty thousand dollars for DPW working downtown maintenance and stuff, and then twenty-five for the police. So currently, and I always push back on them, and anytime I think about lessening that.
There's an article in the, I don't know, I read the, Lake, whatever the, Lake Orion.
Yes, that's why they wanted to disband their DDA.
Well, let's not, uh, go down that one.
But they'll pay a, their portion of it, because they use the parking lot.
We could possibly do that, because. That's what I reminded us, you guys pay us this, oh, that's for, for DPW, I'm like, no, well, Terry is lying, your county and stuff.
I remember this meeting, there was a lot more that we do.
And the, the, the cost for downtown maintenance, parking lot maintenance with DPW payroll, and then it was like a hundred and twenty grand a couple years ago, and they pay us fifty. I says, well, I tell them, you're getting a great deal. Stop while you're ahead.
And it wouldn't be a million dollars, but you could hit them up for ten, twenty grand for their portion of the parking lot.
Well, and I don't know if we could do it that way, in lieu of rent. Or something like that, you pay us, and then we will, oh, we've decided to use the parking lot. I don't know if they could pay for the parking lot. But there's a way around that, right?
Absolutely. And the same with the Chamber, are they still here?
They pay rent, but they, you know, they have one.
And they're, they're not rich or anything.
They're very little. We, we.
But they can pitch in twelve bucks?
Financially, this is the right time to ask them.
Yes, they're doing very well. And they're not supposed to be hoarding their money either.
I will say there's an overflow lot for the DDA.
Well, a part of it is because we've had the grant laws come in.
They're told to park over there.
Right.
And we did have one slip two winters ago in our Hudson Street area.
When I was working downtown, that was always a problem, people always fell, and you always came in with nasty soaking wet shoes.
Yeah, because you, you got these little pile of those, those get the water, and it freezes at night.
There's no way to feasibly hop across the parking lot.
We train our officers, actually, if you spill your coffee, you fail.
Yes, the coffee cup test, I love that.
And again, I don't know if they can legally provide any money to the parking lot, even though it's an overflow parking for the DDA businesses, so.
But it's a discussion.
Yep.
I think it's worth having a discussion, Kelly and Rod, before taking it to the whole board.
Yep.
Nothing new.
If we do it in phases, granted, again, I've spent more time over there in the winter, but isn't, do you think that section would be the most, that's hoping it comes up to the most risk?
That's one of the most public parks. Yeah, they come in and out of here all day, but there's always, all day, every day, somebody parking over there in the Hudson Street area. Overflow customers and, at minimum, workers.
Yeah, I, I, that's where I see a person from public in there.
So that you could probably punch out for, you know, a hundred and fifty or something, and, and that would, because it, it kinda makes sense, the way it's laid out, you could have a line by the dumpster here, straight across and, and have a phase, it makes sense. They got a known parking lot, it's kinda.
But I agree with Ashley, I would disband.
Oh, absolutely.
It's gonna be an inconvenience, no matter what, so why prolong it?
When that gets. Do I get out too?
I did not, I curdign myself, but I cut through this way once, and someone was coming through this way, and we almost hit each other in the parking lot there.
By the dumpster?
I think that is, that's a pretty big blind spot.
I don't know why the dumpster is really there. It doesn't seem like it, it's not convenient.
You know what I think it is, is at one point, someone said, uh, the dumpster vehicle could pull in, grab it here, dump and leave easy.
Well, but there's a few, the, the door that faces out, the overhead door that Linda uses, Polian Trail, you come down that cement, there's also a cement slab or against that back.
Yeah.
But then it's too far from the business.
All of their business is really used.
Yes, they do, they absolutely do.
Overflow, because we have a lot of them closer.
Someone is, I think. I kinda think it's because they like to walk and walk to smoke. But I know, there's one restaurant. But those, it has been a huge problem where there, there is no more room in the dumpsters in that parking lot itself, and there is nowhere to put it.
So if it, instead of being, if you're coming up Hudson Street and hears the dumpster, it would be, you know, twenty feet farther on the left side, it's not too much. It would make more sense, it would make, eliminate that blind corner.
But we had, we used to have dumpsters in both. I know we still have dumpsters in both.
Not since I've been here.
Didn't they used to be dumpsters in the A one too?
That's what I remember.
I think we should look at putting the dumpster, if we're redoing or thinking through this, because where it's at right now, as far away from residential as possible, because right now it's at some.
I was thinking right.
Not, we're keeping that rolling.
So we have robe, pick us some spot. How many dumpsters do we want? Where do we wanna put them? Find the spot.
This is the only plan with the building, the aiming and the dumpster. Back in that space, but it currently isn't out, well, it's actually right there, I think, but they're moving it over there, so from here to there, the poles, right? Perfect, that tree, that's always a blind spot, but. Yes, well, one of our officers, I had to get after her here.
I don't know how close that is to somebody's house.
Get to it and pull out, or from here.
We're throwing the stop sign, it's not breaking surgery.
This from the person who doesn't want any stop signs.
You're lucky I wasn't outside, because I heard they were yelling.
Shut my lights off, no one's coming, turn them back on, I go.
You know what's convenient? There's three stop signs, there's three lines on a ticket.
There's four stop signs.
Did you notice the dates?
The dumpster, the blind corner, to your point, has already been addressed to some degree, if, if this was planned was to go forward.
So we move these spaces over to here.
Yes.
These are no longer spaces.
Yeah, there was a kinda funny, the way they sit out there, like a funny angle anyways. When somebody's parked there, it doesn't look like it's in a space.
There's something about that, because the pole could move.
Right. There's, there is a pole there with the, the DT coming down, and it goes underground to our feed over here. And if we wanted to move that, that might be what that is right there. Existing power utility pole, that pole's not moving. That's why that's there, because that's the main feed from here underground to our panels. And to get that thing to move over here, might as well add a hundred and fifty.
No problems not moving that pole.
Might as well add a hundred and fifty grand to your lot. But that, that's why.
So who's gonna talk to?
If anybody knows this spot right here, this is Mo's parking space.
There we go.
You know, you guys make this happen, you can all have your own spot.
We need to do like those schools where we paint our own spots.
And again, this part over here, the old Township Paul part, i- if we can get that gone, then you could, you could add a couple more spaces along here too, because the downtown needs parking, you know?
I think, if we're gonna deal with this this year, we deal with that next year.
Yeah, because this is CDBG thing, it could be a year or two out anyways.
And again, it's, or get off the pot. Does it not get any better?
Yeah, I think it's a good.
And CDBG might, we might have thirty grand, and it might cost seventy to knock that thing and fill it in the basement and all that stuff anyways, so.
Yeah, let's look at the budget to figure that, and then who can, who and when should we talk, I mean, who should talk to Kelly and Rod and when? Like, is that Ashley and Joe? Okay. Can we do that sooner?
Why don't you slip them some hallucinogen?
I would like to, I need, if possible, can we have a printed budget and show them the benefits? Because I think that's, the biggest issue is in asking for it right when it's about to snow is not a great time. So I think if you can show, like, if we can show the numbers, we know what's in their accounts, we know what's in our accounts, and we know what we give each other and what we're asking for and what. So I think if you can show, like, if we can show the numbers, we know what's in their accounts, we know what's in our accounts, and we know what we give each other and what we're asking for and what.
I've done at the year end, provide them a spreadsheet of, you know, here's what they give us, and here's what kind of includes that.
One page of being very clear.
Yeah, oh, it is, it's only a couple lines, here's what you pay us, and here's what we spend. They, they cover about forty-five percent of our cost of the downtown maintenance and plowing and all that stuff, and then doesn't even take into account any utilities or ran or.
It's a good year to ask them, because I know they have the money to do it, but I just, I think Kelly and Rod. Can see the benefit of it.
You're gonna want Pete there too.
It's, it's an uphill battle, I'm gonna say.
Is he gonna stay on the DDA?
I don't know if Kelly's gonna let him off the DDA.
He did, yeah, she keeps telling him he's on, he's gonna stay, so, and he hasn't, he hasn't bought.
The DDA. Bylaws allow that many non-village residents to be on the DDA.
It says a majority, I think state law says. Majority must have an interest in the downtown.
Well, people have an interest in the downtown.
Right, but he's like the only one who doesn't know. Yeah, he owns the building.
Does it still only have one?
And the two newest members live in the district.
Yeah, Pete would be the only person that doesn't have.
Yeah.
An interest, and then the township rep that we.
Yeah, it's more than a majority.
Can't imagine he wouldn't be okay with that.
I just think it helps them to see the numbers, because this is.
One page, very persuasive.
So parking lot first, firehouse second, township building third.
Uh, yes, I would actually say, I think the building, if there's some little things, like. I don't think a ten, eleven thousand dollar quote to paint the outside and fix some panels is an unreasonable thing to do in tandem.
Open the firehouse?
Yeah.
At least put a face on it for now.
Right, you might get some holes plugged up then and save ten, twenty percent on your heating.
That's true.
Okay.
Never been on the roof, don't know what the roof looks like. I've been on business.
I'm good with that one, I can see what goes on.
Okay, so I, yeah, utility and again, and I will, I will try to get up some of the utility costs to share with you guys, just so you have an idea where we're at on it the last couple of years too.
Great, all right, any further discussion on the building?
That's kind of building in the lot too, isn't it?
Building and, yeah, parking lot, we got both of those, great. Wonderful.
I just have to say, I think Christmas came early, did you not want me to come, because you're gonna surprise me, or?
No, I just didn't, you know, like Don, I mean, if I don't tell me, I scum, if I don't think he has to come.
I know that's just broken record with him, you tell him, talking about the parking lot and that building and stuff, so this is exciting.
Well, that's it, I mean, that twenty nineteen. These are three years old, but Mo's already seen them.
Give you prices from our own, let's go.
All right, next up, um, any preference, should we talk about the PUD project, social media?
Um, the PUD, uh, I know, I think it's, you know, what I did last week, a little bit about the fence, it's not there yet, I know, but the permit was pulled and paid for and pulled. He said that, he was waiting for it to come in because they didn't have it in stock, because this time of year, they don't have a lot of fencing around. Um, and it sounded like the conversation with his neighbor went well.
It looks much nicer over there.
Yes, and I drove by, it's, it's getting better, I, the building still, it'd be nice to get gone, the little garage, he has some stuff stored. Window frames on, we're on number F, number F, yeah, number F. Um, the window frames are all installed, completed and installed, and the glass is ordered, uh, they were, when he talked with last time, they were still on, on the ground. In, inside, one was on the table yet to be built, because they're multi-pieces, so those are all built and installed, the openings.
I was really frustrated and obvious, it was the day of my surgery, so sorry, I was texting everyone during the meeting, but, I mean. I'm happy to see the progress we drove by this morning, things are looking good, I feel like, not feel like. I, I would, I would bet money that we could go back and watch it and we were lied to multiple times over the past two years.
Ashley was my fat checker during the.
Which it was, it, does anyone else remember the last time that he came before council?
A year ago.
A year ago, and he said the windows were ordered, they were on a ship, because we were having problems with ports. And to tell me then that you're saying we ordered the windows. In the last month, I, I mean, I was quite livid, I'm, I'm very disappointed, I think we. Let him off very easy last meeting, it's.
Well, part of that is our legal hand isn't great, and if we blow it up too much, it's gonna get in attorney's hands and everything's gonna stop. And if we run them into bankruptcy, then that's even gonna get worse.
It's a lose, lose, lose.
So that's it, so that, that's kind of why I'd rather pull someone across the finish line with candy in front of them, come on.
I'm, I'm tired of, I, and maybe this is just a personal thing, like, you have to field a lot of the complaints, we see it all of the time. But to come forward and lie really is frustrating, like. Let, can we all just be grownups and be honest and say, like, here's the problem, here's what I'm running into, and that's fine, I think there would be a lot more. Agreeability and understanding.
The fact that he blamed part of this slowdown on school shooting, almost made my head explode. And orange hair plots on the wall, so, but that's okay.
I think I was, I was lucky I wasn't there, because I said lots of choice words in my lazy boy watching the meeting.
We all bit our tongues.
Yeah.
I just, I'm, I'm very frustrated by, as I know we all are, I just.
But I just, it's moving forward and that's what I wanna see, I like to see it moving forward faster.
But this is what happened last time, the month after the meeting.
Allison suggested, every meeting, we have it on the agenda, and then I followed up and asked him, will you attend every meeting, he said, yes, every regular meeting, so hopefully he. And I think we'll be able to hold him much more accountable now, seeing him every month, and we're writing down what he said last time, so then when he says it again, it's not a year later, it's literally a month later. We could say, well, last time you said this, so he's not gonna be able to do that to us anymore.
And it's not a one-on-one, he's telling the entire community at a meeting, and I think it's hopefully will.
I think that's smart, and I, I would really hope that we stick to it even after the first few months, because I know last year too. When we had these conversations, we saw progress, and then December deadlines came and went, and there was no repercussions, and we were. You know, almost back to square one.
The repercussions are very.
Lucy goosey.
Thank you for.
Well, and if you don't sign the agreements, I mean, there's nothing we can do, I, I, I understand, actually. I was like, you are all very nice, because maybe I was just on the anesthesia the last time.
You're riding the prize, you're riding the prize, there's a parking lot over there somewhere, we hope.
It's a fine line between, yeah, still being respectful, even though you know he's lying to you, because you want him to do what you need him to do, and. Holding his speech to the fire, so I think we did a good job with that, so I think if we just remind him every month, you know, if you don't mind. You know, hey, you're on the agenda again, here's the meeting.
Oh, I, I called him this last week too.
So, then I think that'll be great.
Sometimes they just stop by.
Yeah.
Obviously. We would like that parking lot sooner rather than later, but is, do we think there's. There could be structural integrity issues if it is poured at this point.
I don't think so. First thing you would have to do is put the, the curving in, and that would be poured, right, and then the, the base coat of the limestone. Before then, the, the asphalt wouldn't go until spring, you know, yeah, they poured, they're getting asphalt tomorrow morning, didn't you see my Facebook post to the village today?
I almost hit the cone, that's a.
The DPW prepped the area and asphalt, uh, contractor will be here in the morning to finish that patch, repair patch, yes. So obviously, they're still open, they're, they're planning the weather.
Today's weather was gorgeous.
It's not gotten, it's, yes, and there's people still wanting to continue work and still wanting to buy asphalt, so they'll stay open, if the weather really turns bad, they will close. But we're happy.
And I will look at your Facebook page tomorrow.
I think I got one person. Um, yeah, we were just lucky that the initial first price Don got from the company was like almost ten thousand dollars for that. This place out of M A City is doing it for twenty-two hundred.
No, that's not our.
That's why I got lost.
Because Don, we were gonna let sit through the winter with limestone packed in, and that was it, and then he finally got another price from somebody, again, it's like pulling teeth. Um, and like, whoa, okay, and Don had worked with this company before.
People's project then, they got a little slow time.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll do that with twenty-two hundred, we're not doing anything else that day.
Right. So tomorrow, they'll be there, they prepped it today. So the cones should be gone by the end of the day tomorrow.
I was already old.
Justin will talk, because I know his wife comes in and wants to turn left there, and that's really tough for her.
Yeah, I think you're the only.
The cones weren't gonna stay.
Really, like, affected by that every day, we're called, very connected.
Yes, the cones weren't gonna stay throughout the winter, they were just waiting to get it dug out a little bit, took limestone and pack it, and then remove the cones, and that was gonna be the plan through winter, but now, we have a better plan. So that, that, that kind of veered off the PUD thing, but yes, that's kind of where that's at. Um, social media though, oh, it relates to that same deal with the water line break. So around nine or ten in the morning, we were notified of, there's water running down Westbury, I drove down, I looked, I could see it come up through the cracks and down the, and, um. Don, they just picked up with their hot box, a lot of hot mixed asphalt to go do a couple repairs that they had, where they did some out in the lakes and down off Powell Street. To pack it in and, and the one maybe on Lincoln too. He's just in his house, um, so they just picked up hot asphalt that morning, and they were just like, well, we can't break loose. So we called Water Tap, who can do the live taps on water mains and stuff too, but Don looked at it too, and he said, the amount of water coming out of there was not large enough to indicate a main, probably a service lead. Nevertheless, we called Water Tap around ten, they hit the site around three, we dug it out, they realized it was a service lead, and the, the street was back open by seven. That's a guy posted, that was the very first post I did on, on our site, um, that day that, before I left, here's the plan, we know what it is, it should be open by six or seven o'clock. Two or three days later, the following week, I'm talking to Jack Curtis about something downtown over here, and he says, well, you know, something about social media and. Well, you know, Don and those guys, and it's like, have Westbury closed for two or three days, I get it, Don's got guys, they need hours. Like, what are you talking about, it was closed for two or three days, he's, well, that's what, it was all over social media. Somewhere out there, that, that was, that was closed for two or three days, and, and it was because our DPW wanted overtime. When in fact, it was, they showed up at three, they dug, they repaired it, and it was back and the road was open by seven.
Wouldn't you worry, my dog let me know exactly when they were out there.
So again, so social media is a double store, it's the moral of my story.
Did he tell you where and social media came from?
No, he said, it was all over social media, I was like, Jack, what are you talking about?
I would like to know where.
It really was.
It didn't make O M C, I feel like it's not, it didn't happen.
I'm standing on my cell phone downtown, talking about something unrelated, and it came up, I'm like, oh, uh, no, 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 we were open that.
A lot of people like to blame social media for trying to get information out, well, it's all over social media.
Well, a lot of people don't confirm things before they put it on social media either, and that's a bigger problem.
Yeah, so I've been trying to, uh, put more things out there. Um. Put a picture of the, Don sent me a picture this morning, or this afternoon, about they got that all prepped, I put it out there, just let people know, hey, by the way, this is, been a few weeks, it's gonna be asphalt tomorrow. Again, you mentioned about maybe doing some of the things, posts as well, um. Some of the things like hydrant flushing, those kind of things are gonna generate through our office, so I still have to do that.
If I see it, I share it on our page too.
Yeah, and Mike, and the DDA, the Chamber, they're good at putting all kinds of stuff out, and they'll like our stuff now too, to get more, I put something on, on, on. Right before the Thanksgiving about the lions, I gave them a little snarky comment about the lions, hopefully to get a little, you know, traction. National losing on national TV day, I called it, or AKA Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so my thoughts with the social media was just that I think the more information on the day-to-day stuff of what's going on at the village, Joe can post. But I'd like to also have access to our Facebook account, so I can post like, hey, council talked about this this evening, or hey, we have this coming up on the agenda, Joe posts the agenda. And he's got it toward, you can take him a screenshot of him posting it, so it's easy for people to read and save to their phone if they want to, but. I guess I'd like the public to know more about, like, what's coming up, what we're talking about, what important decisions we made, like, if there was a decision that council made that's of interest to people, like, I'd like to. Post about it after the meeting, I'd also like to provide a lot of, like, community resources and things, or like highlights, specific, you know, days and recognized, just different. You know, whether it's organizations or cultural or whatever, you know, just a lot of the. A lot of what the county does, you know, we could kind of replicate, and just so people are becoming aware of, you know, even like the RAP program for water affordability and stuff, just. That's newly changed, it's income based now, people can get a bill that they can afford, which has never been done before in the state of Michigan, so. If I, if council agrees, I'd like to have that access, just to maybe try to like, uh, plan out, um, because you can schedule all Facebook posts, so I can like. Do them for the week in advance, and that way every day we can, don't hold me to it, but I'll try to do it as often as possible.
I'm, I think that's absolutely fantastic idea, and I have no doubt, I have no qualms trusting you with that. But I think we do need to adopt a policy because.
Our sold.
Well, ours, yes, it's, it's, but I don't want. I, I got, it, it's difficult to have one person summarize, if, you know, in the future, who is it, and then they may have a.
This sounds like a decision again for three and point seven five years from now.
Yeah, no, I totally understand.
I was contacted by Unico just last week regarding social media management. And I told them that we weren't at that point yet, um, and we use Unico for our ordinances, and they said they're trying to roll out this program. And right now and for, I don't know, a limited time, a year or something like that, it would be at no charge. Unico normally charges based on your population and, um, you know, probably on your S E V values, but. I told them I would bring it up and see if you're interested, we can make, you know, I could put them in contact with you, if you just wanna talk to them a little bit and see. Since, you know, you're gonna be managing a, a lot of that content for social media, where ours is more business. Related, um, and they manage that for you to make sure posts, you know, I think the time period. Joe and I were discussing that, that, you know, you really have to stay on top of that stuff, because if you don't, you know, that's. You have unnecessary information or information that's passed, it's no longer pertinent to what's going on now, so you really wanna be. On it and, and making those updates and stuff like that, and so I don't really know anything about the program, but. That might be a good, um, you know, re- uh, reference to.
Yeah, I think it's, learning about that for sure, I know at, um, so at the W R C, I manage, one of the departments I manage is our communications and marketing team. And they do an awesome job with our social media, and they have it all scheduled out, and I don't even review their posts in advance anymore, because they're so good at it, but. And I don't know, I don't have like a background in that, but it's just something I see every day that I think I can help with the village improving, and if there was ever a doubt in my mind, like. Maybe I should post this, maybe I shouldn't, I would not, so like.
But archiving the information is important too, because then you, you wanna be able to go back and dig it out if you need it. So there's a lot of things that I don't know if you've even, you know, given thought to, I didn't, you know, but.
Right.
Because I don't really care for social record.
You guys need to archive social thing, where it backs up every single post on your thing, and it's in real time, and. Because sometimes people put up something really nasty, or they threaten somebody, then all of a sudden you remove it an hour later, well, this place will archive it for you, but it's a monthly cost.
This was pre-pandemic, when I went to M A, an M L, M M L event, there was a. Social media segment, and they went through that, the legal aspects of needing to record things, and. How to approach and how to craft a policy that would allow me to remove comments. It's a great area, where you're, you're allowed to remove comments that are profane, that are, you know, explicit, but it.
It's kind of subjective.
To talk about.
Can you turn off comments?
Yeah, I like that idea, I like to.
And there's also pros and, and part that went through pros and cons of how to approach those things. But if we don't necessarily have someone full-time, or not even full-time, but if someone on just a really regular basis leaving those things up. But there's a downside to that too, if.
I'd recommend not allowing comments, it's for, it's for information, like, purposes only, I, I don't wanna create like a dialogue on the village Facebook page, you know.
It solves that problem.
Bandwidth to deal with this, so if we just don't allow comments on, or, and people can share.
Yeah, then that way, yeah, the, yeah, it can get shared on other pages, and there could be dialogues on other pages, but not necessarily on our page, and so at W R C, we do allow commenting. Commissioner, he wants that, and it's a daily thing, going and responding and complaints, and then people say nasty things, and you have to leave it there, and it's. Not pleasant, so I'd rather have ours just be for information purposes only, not converse, I mean, people can come to the public meetings and talk to us about it.
They walk in here and will complain about garbage, or.
Right.
They'll email me about the police letting trucks drive seventy-five miles an hour through town.
Do they calibrate their radar?
I really wanna come back to this next time, because I think we would, I think it'd be good if we went through and made a list of things we would. Ideally like to see and look at how. You know, in the office, what an organ, who. Like, how that would look.
Yeah.
Um. And that's why I wanna talk about it later, because my brain just stopped working, and there was something really important that I had to. Oh, our website, we should probably. Oh, our website, we should probably look at our website too, cause apparently, someone was trying to find the stream, couldn't find the stream. Whatsoever, and they didn't know that the cable.
Oh, we have a link to O C T V, but I don't know how you get to their YouTube, I could maybe put a link.
Part of it, I think, is we're in an echo chamber of being, people who aren't in the know about the useful thing, we know how, we know how the interconnectings. If you're a late person coming into this.
Our website needs work, it's not accessible, it's not.
When our, we're posting agendas, I'd like to see like the direct link to the agenda and the packet, cause I I think it's a lot of.
Searching.
It's a lot of searching and sorting, unless you know the right terms and the right places to look.
So maybe have the one that's up.
It doesn't, and our search function is.
Well, I know that the D D A just redid their website, so I wonder.
I haven't, okay, maybe I haven't looked it.
Uh, but it's just their one, I haven't deep into it, but that's just. It wasn't overly expensive?
They went through Oakland County Main Street, or somebody down there get it to them, what, did it, did it for them?
We can talk about this, I mean, I'd love to talk about this a little bit more next time, we'll all have to think about it, and kinda come back and run out. You look.
No, this is me, Chippy, how do I do this, you show me. I feel a lot of things, when I start doing stuff.
Yeah, I just, I just know that I, like, if I, like, if I wanted to know, like, you know, how late Funky Monkey was open tonight, I went to their Facebook page, checked their hours, like. So many people just go to Facebook, and if something's going on in the village, like a street closing for two hours for the water lead break, like. If they go on the village website and see it there, they're getting the correct information instead of speculating and running wild.
Have to meet people like where they are, and like integrated into the, a system they already use.
Right, that's where people get their daily news now, is just scrolling Facebook, seeing what's.
And and those kinda things you can't put on a website, you know.
True.
And and I'm coming into this kicking and screaming, as I've been telegraphing for a year or so. That's a, Vicky says, do you have a Facebook, I'm like, yeah.
I think if you want, like, yes, social media is absolutely important, but I think, and for a quick update, that's where I would look, but I think you're looking at. You know, bookend generations from mine that are not going to be going to Facebook to look for this information.
And and so Terry and I were talking today, so I said, you know, I I get the relevance of it for certain things, right? Hey, this is gonna be closed, this happened for a couple hours, I'm not gonna put that on the website, cause then you gotta go and take it off, well, social media, it just comes and it flows by, another one just comes and it flows by, it doesn't, you don't have to take it off. It's it's downstream, you posted it three weeks ago, whatever, you don't worry about going back and taking it off, or. It was just last week, I went and put our C D B G public hearing notice on the face, on our, our website off, cause it it's there, we had the meeting, and you get busy, it's like, oh, shoot, a week later, it's still on there. It's last week's meeting, so I have to go and take it off, where social media, you put it on, and it just, it just goes by, and you don't care about it.
Yeah, I just know, I know, like, there's, it's certainly a population, but that population is also feeding information to everybody else that's been there, so I think it might reach a lot. And to be honest, like, Daxford leader doesn't report on our meetings like they used to at all, but we don't, I mean, they used to do really detailed, nice articles on what we talk about.
Now he's reporting from the township.
Yeah, nobody knows what we're doing anymore, so it's just one outlet that we have.
Be a nice thing to, to somehow, as we're going through posting. To do some sort of like, I don't know, education's not the right word, but how many times, you know. Even for me, where I'm like, well, who should I talk to, is it the Chamber, is it D D A, is it Village, is it Township, who does this, who's where we're, like.
That's what I was thinking too, of like, yeah, just incorporating the general like, did you know type stuff, and like, you know, just kinda weaving that in, because, yeah.
And for our, our M S four permit, with the sanitary sewers and stuff, Clinton River watershed. They provide us information, we put it out here, we put the things up, we take pictures of it, we show that was on, we have a public education aspect of that, right, so. Some of those things we put online, you know, about washing your car and your lawn versus in your, in your thing, so those kinda things we put on there, because. A, it's good, cause people never think about it, and they're like, oh, never knew that, or, and for, it's a responsibility for us to get that out there anyways. So it kinda works in that sense.
Yep, yeah, and I shouldn't say nobody knows what we're doing, cause we have O C T V, and if it weren't for them, no one would know what we're doing.
So like, what, live stream last time, it was me and Don Rush, on it, that was it, like you could see.
And 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 a couple years ago, there was a push to have daycare in here, so many people would come to the, to the meeting, and I thought that was, people could drop their kids after, and you're going to Twenty-four Street. Yeah, where where are those forty people in the meeting? Um, so, you you can't drag people to meeting, believe me, when something's up, they'll show. And when it's already being, O C T V's been around, what, forever, and they now are actually not just filming it and finding it a week later, which is like it was a year ago. Now they're live streaming it, and yet two people showed up, so you can't, you can create some buzz and some interest, but you can't.
I do know a lot of people going back to watch it, so.
What was on the agenda?
I don't know.
There wasn't. Yo, there wasn't a lot of hot topics, something to turn up. It'll be, when there's something big going on, there'll be people watching.
Right.
There's, this was, this meeting was talked about on social media quite a bit, because of the memorial, so, um, there was a lot of talk about this out there.
Well, that's my point, um, when you, when when you have a meeting and there's two people in the audience, like, that's okay. You know, you don't need to go straight up the street, say, come on in here.
Yeah, but the purpose of a meeting in the public forum is for you to conduct your business, it's not. Let's all have everybody come in and weigh in on the topic, I mean, you do want public, you know, feedback and all of that, and you wanna be accessible. But the whole transparency, so that they they can actually see what's, you know, how you're deliberating or whatever. It's not, it's it's not to, we need to get more people involved, it is so that you can conduct your business in an open forum.
And I I I see what you're saying with that, but if we don't, realistically, if we're trying to be equitable and. We're only gonna hear input from people who have more time on their hands, retirees, if we're trying to get. You s- you know, represent everyone in our community, the younger families, we have to meet them in a way. That they can access it, because how many people with small children can break, be religious about watching every single meeting?
Well, like I said, they can go back, three days later, eleven o'clock at night, go, alright, like, now I got an hour, I didn't have it Monday night. So thank goodness that the, the O C T V is that.
Set it at two times and listen to it fast forward.
The only people in the community watching. Shape the narrative of what happened without putting, you know, a summary like, you know, Kelsey was saying. They're not getting the full story, and it can, it gave a telephone of what's happening and.
There's always that, that that, you'll never get rid of that.
The road was shut down for two days.
Cause even when people come to your meeting, part of the problem with engaging your public, you know, in the comments while you're talking, is that. Everybody's not being represented there, it's only those people that have showed up, so when you take a topic. That you're discussing, and all of a sudden, you have these popcorn questions or whatever people popping up, it's only representing that one, you know, and and it's not fair. Till, as you say, your point, that, because everybody is not there. So the real purpose of your meeting is for you to conduct your business and make your decision based on the information you provided, you can always go back and change your mind, that's always an option. In parliamentary procedure, when new information is presented, you can bring it back and say, hey, you know, this is something that we. We were not aware of, and and then you can make corrections and stuff, but that's what I'm just saying, the whole transparency thing, and about having your, a public meeting. A lot of people don't understand, and maybe that's something that they could learn through social media, cons- the concepts of 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 a meeting. Is so that you can conduct your business in an open forum, so that they can access the information and see what your deci- right, who voted what, how did they? How did they come to that decision?
I really, really like what Lake Orion, whatever platform they use, shows the topic. And who voted for what, I think like as a voter, that's, not live, no, not live. It just, it records what was voted on and who voted for what.
Yeah, those are those managed, those are those minutes management, I use those, I use two different systems before I came here. And that's what they do, here, you have to actually roll call vote it, unless, e- even in a voice vote, everybody votes affirmative, if somebody says nay. That's recorded in in my minutes anyway, but I know what you're saying, they automatically will, they, when the vote goes in, they automatically record. Who voted in those, those management systems are great.
Like those, something like that to post, because I know, like, as a resident, I want to know. Before I came here, I didn't know who was voting for what, or who stood for what in a local politic thing, like, I would love, that information is helpful to be able to see. Okay, here's how they voted historically in their running or doing this, like, I just think that's helpful.
And you can go back in minutes, you can go back and look for the last year of minutes too. Well, I'm just saying, how else, if you, if you wanna know how someone voted historically, I don't know how else you're you're.
If there's split issues, you know, I could post, you know, like, who voted for what on split issues, just so the community knows that. I think it's important to have split issues, and we don't all agree on everything, so it like chose, I would just like people to be more interested in local government, particularly because it's really difficult to fill vacancies. That we have on the D D A and the planning commission, and so the more that's out there about what we're doing, people might just find interest in it, and then I can. Constantly insert those, hey, you wanna join us, type posts as well, Vicky, kind of, I don't know.
In the D D A, I made a comment at last month's meeting, that's, they had all but one. It was the fullest board I've seen in a long time up there, they had eight people sitting up there, and it came down, it was nice.
So when do we wanna meet again?
Right.
Two weeks from now is your regular meeting, did you wanna do a week from now?
That was your backup.
We can talk about the fourteenth, which will be next Wednesday. And then the following Wednesday.
Cause that'll be not so much follows on these, but the other topic we didn't touch on.
Why do you wanna talk about social media again, really?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that's your agenda for the next regular meeting, or the the monthly meeting?
I'm sorry, so the fourteenth would be our next workshop, and then when is the council meeting?
Two weeks from today, twenty-first.
It's on that Wednesday?
That's through the end of the year, right?
So, is it, do you wanna do the fourteenth then, next Wednesday, seven P M, same place?
Is seven o'clock good for you too, I mean, it gets to home pretty late.
Yeah, it does, but you know, I mean. Gotta work too, so, I'm, whatever, we work at your pleasure, whatever you want.
No, you guys are here.
Yeah.
Theory date in the morning.
Well, a maze like this, we might come in an hour late, because we can't leave from five and go home to seven, so we'll work ninety-six. So we'll flex, because again.
Here's available at five to do it at six, to do it before seven?
I don't usually get home until like six or after, so that's why seven always works.
Yeah, but don't worry about us, I mean, like you said, on a day like today, we're not gonna be here late, we're like, well, we'll work ninety-six until eight to five, we'll just come in an hour late, cause then. Or something like that, because we're gonna be here for a couple hours anyways, we'll just flex a little bit, and gives us a chance to maybe do something in the way to work, that we didn't. Have time to leave, and we'll do between five and seven.
Let me see what is going on on the fourteenth, depending on what meetings I have that day. I could probably make six thirty on the fourteenth, that that would be better for anyone. No, seven okay, okay. Alright, so twelve fourteen at seven.
The days when we can do like five, that's awesome, but.
Yeah, the only bad thing is, is it gets dark out at five o'clock.
So on the agenda will be.
I like it.
If I have anything else to share, I'll share, but probably closer to twenty-first as far as our regular meeting.
And then the fire chief will potentially be able to make it to the fourteenth.
Yep, I will invite him, yep. She'll, Pete Schultz probably will not come. He's begun his descent.
Yeah, and those envelopes are your mailbox, you know, everything that was in your mailbox, plus the financial statements and that presentation. So bring your financial statement.
I would just open it at workshop, okay.
Alright, any other public comments? Any council comments?
I have a question, I mean, probably after this meeting.
After the meeting? Okay, any other council comments? Okay, motion made, seconded, and all those that favor I? Nay, motion carried, we are adjourned.